Six block, I will bring this on March ninth, twenty twenty one. If they would have permission to leave the order. Ma'am, would you pray for them, please?
Hey, Mr. Lee. Did you ever follow me, just thank you for this day? Thank you for all you've blessed us with. Just please look over this meeting. Take care of those who have some may write season for this county and our government. We just let you know, just thank you for everything you've done and your precious hand. Thank you, please.
Yes, sir.
Flag, please. It's the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undying, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all. Other comments, uh, Ms. Erin Henson?
Uh, if you look for it smart, you'll come up.
Oh, okay, okay. You do not wish to speak.
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't read that.
No problem. I just don't think I'd look good with this mask on too late.
Okay, alright, I understand. Any other further comments? Alright, we'll move on. Approval minutes for February the fourth, twenty twenty one, February the ninth, twenty twenty one, and February the twenty second, twenty twenty one. Make a motion.
I'll make the motion.
A motion for Ricky.
I'll say it.
Second from Van. All with a vote? Motion to carry it now. Approval debate monthly deal.
I'll make the motion.
A motion for Ricky.
I'll say it.
Second from Van. All vote, raise your right hand. Motion to carry it now. Discuss historical plat image compensation agreement. Clerk of course, Julie Woods.
That's me.
And the document she's going to refer to, it's on tab two. What about tab two?
Hey, there y'all.
Hi, Ms. Julie, how are you?
Doing good. I found some money.
Found some money?
Yeah.
Great.
The Georgia Clerk's Authority, are y'all kind of familiar with what they are? They're like a mass hub that for real estate for the state of Georgia. And due to COVID, they've started the historical plat image, um, project. That's where all plats that are scanned and indexed prior to two thousand and three, they've now added them to the statewide search system. So, in essence, an attorney or title abstracter, they can just about sit in their office and do a title exam without having to physically come into clerk's office. And especially helps when, Lord forbid, a clerk's office is shut down temporarily for COVID. You know, the whole system really doesn't stop. So thankfully, all of ours were already scanned and indexed. So they compensated us three dollars per plat for what the work that we've already accomplished or had done. And that total came to seventeen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars that they paid to, they, they sent a check, I had the check, they sent it to, to my office. However, without this agreement, we can't use the money quite as I had planned to use it. Earlier, well, last year after budget time, there was some state mandated, uh, if you'll see it's in paragraph three, there was some state mandated scanning and indexing of old real estate cancellations that we had to do. It was back from the nineties. That, there was four huge cancellation books that we had to scan and index. Well, we had not allotted for that in our budget last year because we didn't know we were going to have to do it. So that bill brought us to a little over fourteen thousand dollars. That was not allotted for in our budget last year. So with this agreement, we, I would be able to receive this money into my budget to satisfy the deficit of my budget and my real estate to take care of that state mandated real estate cancellations that we had to do for last year. And the remaining balance would be a little over thirty-two hundred dollars, you know, from the historical plat to the real estate. And what I would like to do with that remaining is we have some very old real estate index books that are falling apart to get those repaired and hopefully scanned and online with the Clerk's Authority so we would be another step ahead with what's probably coming down the line. So, without adding that to next year's budget.
What's the agreement basically saying that you'll keep up with this system going forward? Is that why they pay you three cent or whatever?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And that this money would go directly into my budget and then I would spend it to pay off that debt, then to kind of pay my budget back for the money that we used at the budget that was not allotted for, and the remaining amount.
To redo the.
To redo my real estate index books. Yes, sir.
So just a question, Amy, you do this all the time, so how, how far are we ahead of most other communities in this? We're really good, I mean, for a while, those ninety-two was the number, right? And, you know, never failed when you needed to deal with particular plats. You would always have to come up here and give anything for ninety-two some amount. As I understand it, every plat.
Every plat that we have will be, is on mine.
But that's compared to other communities, is that the status?
And it's very, very, very advantageous to a lot of people, not just Roger, I mean, anybody that do it, so.
We try very hard since, well, before I was in office, but then when I took office, try to take the steps with the technology that we need to take.
Yeah, we're very fortunate.
So just from my own information, and I guess everybody else did a lot of this too, so I can go access this personally like I can Q public or anything else from my own personal computer and find this information?
You have to make an account with the Clerk's Authority, and yes, sir, you could, you could go on there and print it off.
What charge, what, is it charged?
There, there is a charge.
Gotcha.
Yeah, the same as if you come in our office.
Still, it'd be beside.
Yes, sir. But if you're out somewhere and you need a plat, you can pull it up.
Cool.
So I guess what you're asking us over here in, and we're going to do a motion on it, is to, to extend what you've already done. And on what?
To be able to put this money directly into my budget.
So you'll move to, to, the fourteen thousand will be what you went over.
Yes, sir.
Because of what you've done.
Satisfied.
And, uh, the remaining balance would be used to, to mend these old books.
Yes, sir. They are.
How much is that?
Well, the remaining balance would be a little over thirty-two.
I'll make the motion.
Yes, sir.
And I'll say it.
I got a motion by Ricky and a second by Van as they're in discussion. If there's no discussion, I'll ask for a vote. Everybody in favor of this, if you raise your right hand. Motion carries now.
So we don't need to vote on this agreement to vote for Brad to be able to sign this deal?
I still see those details on there, but that's another.
Okay.
Is that it, thank you?
That's it, yes, sir. Thank you for your time.
Approved or denied requests, proposals, and ambulances.
So this is tab three in your good books. The first page is a letter from our EMS director, uh, basically saying which of those proposals that, uh, he recommends. And that next page, you have a list of all the proposals that we received, uh, along with a yellow highlighted one, and that is, uh, Ms. Rogers', uh, recommendation book board.
The yellow highlighted?
Yes, sir.
I'm not saying that, uh, highlighted is for MedX. First-class medics, one of them don't care a lot.
F three fifty?
Yes, sir.
That's gas.
It is gas. F three fifty-four is going to have the seven point three liter, uh, engine in.
Hundred twenty-nine thousand three hundred.
That's for the ambulance, uh, base ambulance. The only difference is in our proposal that he said he had, and we, I came to you before, we talked about cardiac monitors, uh, being short, uh, there's a couple of live item things that he had. One thing was the cardiac monitor and mounts. I've asked for two of those, uh, or like that showed that it's going to be in there. And anything that's over the insurance payment will come from our splash.
So the amount highlighted at five seventeen, uh, with some change, that's the price for four new ambulances from the MedX. The, uh, life pack monitor, the cardiac monitor, they're running about forty thousand a piece?
Yeah, forty thousand one hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Okay.
That's with the mount.
Oh, that's with the.
If I remember correctly, that's with the mount. So there would be two at that price, then we would actually just buy, uh, two more mounts for the other ambulances for the two monitors that we have now.
Sure.
Alright, so, uh, I think the last time we had.
What about electric beds, though?
Were they all okay? Alright, there's, that has been a struggle for, to get Striker to be able to come in with the insurance company. I've got them set up finally. The insurance company let us bring them in this next Friday. He's going to come in and check. Uh, they allowed us to get our stuff off the ambulances last week, uh, except for one ambulance, we couldn't take anything off. But the other three were able to salvage as much as we possibly could.
Okay, we'll be fine, I want you to salvage them.
As far as the beds?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I'm getting at. I can't tell you that till Friday. And that is not in the proposal because we're hoping to, uh, be able to use these. If not, then I'll look for a splash and see what I can do from there. The only thing is, another thing that's going to be added, and this will come out of our splash, but we did not bid it, is to make the, uh, the new ambulances come prepared for the track. Uh, all these old ones, they hadn't cut out, they put a strip in and wired such as that to make it work for the, the load system. And if, if we get it and, uh, they're able to be done, all we're going to have to do is put that strip back in each one of those ambulances. When they get here, we'll be able to just swap these units out of each one of our ambulances into the. Does it appear to you that the beds are okay? There was no fire inside? There was nothing. Every, most of what we saw in there was just pretty, on the ambulances, uh, even the one that seemed to take the most heat. Uh, I was not able to look into it, but some of the other medics did when it happened, but the insurance wouldn't let me bother it the other day. But the rest of everything looks like a lot of smoke damage. Uh, not anything looked like melted, it was just smoke damage. And, uh, now they're smutted. But I'm hoping that everything in there was okay, that, you know, unless the, the heat or something might, but everything else seemed to be okay, so I'm hoping those tracks and cocks are alright.
But we need to wait for the, the proposal to help to get to see that stuff.
Boy, this is just on Van. Yeah, these are the ambulances, the.
He still get that.
So, here, here's my next question, so I think I noticed that, so we getting, as far as ambulances go, we're getting three hundred and what from the insurance company?
As far as what they were insured for, uh, I'd have to go back and look for that number off the top of my head.
That's my vibe, we have insured five hundred, they kind of appraised them, you know, you get stuff appraised by, which was like three hundred and sixty-something thousand. So. That number I had not been aware of. I was hearing five feet, five five from somebody. So how much is it? They were insured for five hundred, but they got to be worth five hundred. Alright, so what, what is the amount that I've got that? Did you remember? I think, I won't say it's three sixty, but I don't have that in front of me.
I don't have it in front of me either. I can text Hannah and see if she can give it back to us. So if you want to, we can table this and circle back to what I can answer from.
No, but I mean, we got that amount. We got that amount, I mean, we got to figure that out. I'm just, I'm just, I just thought you was into living on that. No, I was wrong. I thought we had the five, you know, five and a half. Alright, the three sixty, is that three hundred and sixty thousand or is that three hundred and sixty dollars? What, what did you mean when you said three sixty? I'm claiming it's three sixty, but I don't have that in front of me. I didn't see it on paper, but I don't have that. I'm just clarifying to everybody that we are not getting by on that whole dimension for the ambulances.
We got the five hundred thousand dollar payment up front to help continue government operations from ACCG, but that was not solely for the ambulances. That was for everything, along with hopefully additional payout, uh, after insurance is done and everything.
But they've already gone and put a figure on the amounts that they're paying, and that's all we're going to be paid is their pay. Which was a three hundred something thousand dollars, I can't remember exactly. But I mean, we got splash made covered to rest on, on other ambulances. But I think we're going to be tapped at that point. Yeah, we're going to be really tapped at that point. I'll have to buy brandy for complete ambulance because I will doubt not, if those stretchers, the loads didn't work. And I can't answer that, I'm hoping they do. That's a hundred, we bought them a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
How'd you get one of that check?
And listen, and listen. A hundred and twenty thou, a hundred and twenty thou, now that was a loading system break, that wasn't ambulance. Listen, right, that, that's not been assessed yet. Right, no. That three hundred something thousand dollars was on the ambulance. We had five hundred thousand dollars covered on the ambulance and contents. Contents has not been looked at yet. Alright, so that has not. So, so they, they, they can be some additions. Oh, because they could look at them. Right, yeah, I understand that.
That's just for ambulances.
Just for ambulances.
And, and these prices, is that, is that for everything in the ambulances?
That's for. That's just an ambulance. That's just the whole. Weight is cheaper than the last one we bought, because we're going to get this time right this.
That's right.
That last one was like a hundred, hundred forty thousand.
A hundred forty some change, yes, sir. Now that one was diesel too, like you said. The last one we got.
Well, we'll make a, make a motion to go ahead and go with that.
We're going to need a motion to go ahead and accept a bid on, 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 uh, EMS proposal for first-class medics in an amount of a hundred twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars per ambulance with a total of five seventeen, three twenty-four. I would need a motion.
I don't like the motion, I've got purchase of that.
Got a motion from.
I'll say it.
Got a second from Ricky. Is there any discussion?
We got the house, then just give the proposal tomorrow and all the money and should be done.
Will this motion include the two cardiac monitors that they need? Or do we need to come back?
That's why we, we don't have to play that much money, we don't have to have it in the right, we cannot just exclude that if he ain't got it at this price. It did. Well, he's got it itemized in his proposal.
I gave you the proposal.
But he bitted it out, out, or gave the proposal with that price in there, it's why I'm not adding it on this.
There is some addition to five seventeen and three twenty-four, which says?
Addition to that, yes. That is not on the agenda, so no, we cannot vote on. I'm sorry if we can't vote on that. So we got a motion and a second for the ambulances, and we had noted discussions, so I will call for a vote. Everybody in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries now. Alright, so we, we'll have time for these things as months out. Well, he said this particular company here had chassis on the ground and said he would do his best to have them ready for us after we were ordered and get everything nailed down within ninety days. And he said he's got a hundred and twenty day window, but he hasn't had them here within ninety days. Well, go ahead and be looking at some monitors. Are they just one kind, are they multiple kinds? Can we get bids? I, I did send out bids before for the same kind of stuff, and I didn't receive anything from, uh, anybody that was comparable to these. These are the ones we, just like what we've got, no training curve or anything, they're ready to go. Uh. Contact the county and see how long it will take. If it's going to be a long lead time, we'll have a special program meeting and go ahead and do that. But it is not on the agenda, so I cannot. Alright, you talking about, about the cardiac monitors? Yes, yes, okay. Okay. Alright, so I've been, we've, we've been approved for how much, five seventeen? Five seventeen, three twenty-four. Have that four of them? That's four of them.
And Brian, the insurance appraisal value, uh, was four hundred and forty thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars and eighty-five cents.
Already?
Oh, yeah. I have no thought.
Call her again and see if we can get some more on. Four forty what?
Four hundred and forty thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars and eighty-five cents.
It was, it was ten months old. No, no, not even ten months old. That's all, yeah, six hundred. Thank you, gentlemen. Alright, we need to approve or deny closing the courthouse on Good Friday. Something that we've been doing pretty much over the years, so.
Make a motion, we approve the closing of the courthouse on Good Friday.
A motion, Frank. Second from Van, uh, being discussed. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries now. Is this something we just need to go ahead and vote on to do?
Every year.
Every year. Instead of having a vote on this.
January, May, and then you vote all holidays during the.
Always, uh, add it to approved, pay holiday.
Okay, add it to January, May, next year. Well, that's making votes somewhere, do that, or we don't have to. Any holiday, if it's just to do it one time a year, I mean, you know we're going to do it, do it every year. Alright, next on the agenda is discuss the bid process.
Okay, so in tab four is the proposed bid proposal process. On the first page, the second page is our current process. Uh, I think I've mentioned this to nearly all of you all. Uh, essentially, it has come up that it may be more efficient to look at having a bid opening meeting before you all meet. Uh, so like we did with Roger with the EMS situation, that way we go over all the specifics, the department head can take time to look over everything, figure out what would work best for their department, and then present that to you all, uh, at your next regular call meeting after that bid opening meeting. So this sort of updates that. It also adds proposals. The main difference when Heather and I researched this between bids and proposals is bids must exactly match what we have sent out or what we've solicited for. Proposals may differ slightly. That provides more flexibility for, maybe eventually you consider, uh, things that it's going to take longer to get, but we can substitute something for it. So that just provides a little bit more flexibility for you all. Uh, so this breaks everything down. Uh, it includes pretty much everything that was in the old policy, uh, but just breaks everything down.
Now, is it, I'm going through everyone here, does it say here anywhere that we have the option to repeat or reject all bid?
Yes, sir, it does.
Okay.
So in the final steps, uh, on the back part of that page, I believe it's point three.
I think that they will just, uh, I think it will just advertise whatever you're going to look for bids in the paper, and that everybody bid on it, and whoever gets the bid, give them two weeks to get their insurance.
Sure. That's addressed in here. It says that what they need as far as insurance, which is no change from the current, uh, um, policy. However, it says individuals slash companies may still bid and propose without these documents, but if they are awarded the bid slash proposal, will not be able to begin to work on a project until they submit these certificates to the county administrator, receive a letter of authorization to begin.
All bids are going to be open like a bowl at the end of the meetings.
That's what's proposed. What's proposed is a bid opening meeting.
I think they will be, they don't look at the record information they want. It's plain number four.
You don't plan to say the bid before us and when we make sure they qualify before we get here and say, well, if they're.
They can do that, actually, the bid, then we go, the name, then do it again.
We don't have enough information at least, then we got to put it off around another meeting to actually prove it.
Okay.
So we have it preempted.
I mean, it's, I'm not thinking, what you're talking about, bidding, that, you've got construction, then you got. Engang. Phone, hook man, and you got.
Yes, sir.
Anything.
What you say is let the municipality go in there and look, and the county commissioner go in there and look, and make sure it's a name.
Make sure it qualifies before we even get in here to the table.
So you got to bring all the bids in, let everybody sit, or you going to kick the one that?
No, no, he'll bring it just like he did Roger's there, they'll all be there.
And like, this evening, all these that were listed, this is what we done with that. If you want to review any of those, they're all right here at this meeting if you would like to review them. So that's what we're proposing.
The main thing is there's no way in the time we have in this meeting with all these folks that we can thoroughly review all these proposals. So if it's preempted that we do that, and you all aren't pretty qualified, then that makes total sense. And not be able to wait on another meeting.
Roger can contest the amount of hours that they've spent this last week reviewing all of these proposals.
Let's play number four.
How, how you going to mess them? How you going to want to open these bids up and see which one is, is all of them correct and bring them to the board? I mean, how you put that?
Mr. Chairman, can I just explain how we done hours? If that makes any clarity, whether you like it or not, I'm not saying one way or the other. What happened was, is we got hours, uh, it was an open meeting, anybody that wanted to attend could attend. Uh, we had one, two, three, or four of the ones that proposed, gave the proposal, they came at the bid opening. And what we done, we came in, uh, opened up all the bids, Oakley sounded out who was high bidder, low bidder, or whatever, the whole, everybody's bid. And at that point in time, it was all over with. And he explained to them then that it would be, uh, at the, the next board meeting that we had, we would be made to, uh, bring it up and hopefully have a, a decision for. So everybody heard who was wanting to come, and I think there was a phone call or two made for the ones who weren't here, how the bids went. Or I say bids, it was proposals. Uh, but that allowed us time to sit and go through each one of those, check off and make sure from our specs that we had, to what they sent us, were some were comparable, uh, look at some things some had, some didn't. And we did, it, it took a little while for us to go through everything, but that's the way it was. It, it would be an open meeting, the general public could've came in if they wanted to and just listened or whatever, uh, but that, that's the way it worked for us.
And before that meeting, you all were also invited to attend that as well. So this is in no way, shape, form, or fashion trying to remove the award from this process. If anything, this is just trying to streamline it and make it more efficient, and thank you for y'all. Now, Commissioner Benjamin, I know you asked about point four, uh, what exactly, which point four?
That from the first page, the board committee, they choose a, and a responsible proposal, regardless of price, so long as it's a decision to justify.
Sure. So that is one of the differences between bids and proposals. When, uh, we solicit for bids, it is the expectation that the lowest, uh, responsible bidder must receive the award. When we request for proposals or advertise for proposals, if there is a low bidder, but you see someone who's a little bit higher than that low bidder, but you like what they proposed a little bit more, you have the flexibility then at that point in time to select that individual, so long as there's a justification for that.
Okay, well, what, what problem, I mean, what you, what you do like this, a certain thing you propose, and then certain thing you bid out, so what's the difference, I mean?
I know, I do, and this bid process, they would all be a proposal instead of.
No, uh. Bid, we specify, we won't. We allow them to get. So like for the ambulances, we have, and that's right there, that's a proposal. Yes, sir. We have four pages worth of specifications of what we would like, and then we allow the different companies to look at that and to submit what they had or to try to match those specifications as close as possible.
But if you had, uh, doing, uh, I guess roll or whatever, then that would be more like a bid.
Yes, sir. If you had one project that had to be completed a certain way, there was no ifs, ands, or buts about it, then you would submit, or you would request bids on that.
What about, what about the insurance they're supposed to have? What we going, just say on building, they doing, what we going to do about that? We bid this out, they got to have the insurance right then?
No, sir. Uh, they will have to get insurance before they start the project, and that's that point two under other requirements on the back sheet. Um, it says that they are required to have a million dollars in, uh, general liability, employees liability insurance, and at least a million dollars in business physical damage slash liability slash property insurance. Uh, they can submit their certificates with their sealed bid or proposal, or, uh, if they are awarded the project, they will submit their certificates to this office before they are sent a letter of authorization to the.
What about the one gets the bid, he's already got his insurance? And then you get this man die in front of two weeks? What if he don't get none, what you going to do about that?
Another guy gets it done.
Go wait two weeks on that, start again.
If he does not, or if whoever does not submit their insurance certificates, then then they will not be authorized until they get more.
It wouldn't be a contractor we going to hire if he tells us he going to get insurance, he got to get insurance.
I'm probably, but I won't go by, I mean, would you go to the next bidder or would you bid it?
Go to the next, bid it out of what?
That's not specifically listed in this? We could make it so.
It's got to be, I mean, it's got to be. We're going to walk the law.
Sure, if a winner's bidder can't provide insurance, I would say it would go to the next highest bidder because that would be a winner.
Yes, sir.
I mean, it needs to be in black and white.
I got one more question. Yes, sir.
On the con step, number three. If the board of commissioners choose not to settle in bid proposal, they may either instruct the administrator to re-adapt.